Felonies, domestic violence and severe mental illness.
And I am pleased to announce that last Wednesday, our officers brought that list of prohibited gun owners in the city of Los Angeles down to zero.
Other city highlights are job creation and the growth of tech firms. But the crisis facing Los Angeles today remains homelessness. The mayor says building supportive housing is not enough. That's why he wants to reserve $20 million for temporary shelters and rewarding those council districts that accept shelters in their neighborhoods with additional cleaning crews and police services.
This is my commitment to you and the communities that you represent. If you have the courage to stand up a shelter in your district, you should get the resources and the reward to keep your neighborhoods clean.
He's putting his budget and his money where his mouth is to fix some of the problems, certainly highlighting the fact that crime is down because we're nothing as a city if we're not safe. And the question on a lot of people's minds is will he or won't he be running for president in the year 2020? After recent visits to New Hampshire and Iowa, both early voting states, the mayor says he won't make an official decision on that until next year. At City Hall, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The mayor also mentioned the state of California's $6 billion surplus. He and other city mayors want a chunk of that money reserved for homeless housing. And one day after he delivered his address and labeled homelessness as the issue facing Los Angeles, Mayor Eric Garcetti signed three measures aimed at tackling the problem on multiple fronts. Anna Marcos has more.
Call it a triple whammy. City leaders have dealt not one, not two, but three mighty blows to the city's homeless problem. And Mayor Eric Garcetti has just signed all three into law.
You better believe that when there's a crisis, we get creative. I told one press outlet today, it's kind of like sticking your foot on three accelerators all at the same time: street outreach, shelters, and permanent housing.
L.A. becomes the first California city to declare a homeless shelter crisis under a change in state laws that will free the city from some state regulations in building more emergency shelters. The city is also hiring more street outreach service workers.
And we're looking at every possible option to get encampments down now.
The crisis that we have, we have to respond with the intensity that that crisis faces us.
Another law, the Permanent Supportive Housing Ordinance, streamlines the approval process for developers who build housing for the homeless. Construction time goes down from about five years to less than a year.
I simply have to say this to the 20-some-thousand people that are living unsheltered in our city tonight, hold on, we're coming for you. To every neighborhood that puts up with encampments and folks living in alleys and sewers and everywhere else folks can get, hold on, we're finally coming for you.
The third law signed is the Motel Conversion Ordinance, which will ease requirements for motel owners who want to convert their units to emergency or supportive housing for the homeless.
There is a meantime. And in the meantime, we have to do everything we can to get people housing now and have people in neighborhoods throughout our city see fewer and fewer encampments.
Think about it, if you add a small kitchen to a motel room, you've got yourself a pretty good starter apartment, a place that reminds you that you're a human being.
The city has also voted on a plan to install trailers near El Pueblo to house the homeless. More trailers could soon pop up throughout L.A. But city leaders know these are just stepping stones to their final goal of providing permanent housing for all L.A.'s homeless people. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Among the requirements developers must meet to take advantage of the streamlined approval process is that there must be at least 120 units and all units must be affordable with at least half of them set aside for homeless residents. And boosting the effort to build more homeless housing has come in the form of two new city laws, which speed up housing construction and create a new form of temporary shelter. Anna Marcos has more.
Money, some city leaders say, is no longer the biggest hurdle in solving the homeless housing crunch. Measure HHH approved by voters in 2016 to build more supportive housing took care of that. So what is the biggest challenge?
The tools we need now are scissors to cut the red tape and battering rams to break through the roadblocks and sledgehammers to smash the resistance.
To that end, city leaders have approved two laws in city council that will get more of that prop HHH money flowing quickly. One measure streamlines the planning and construction process and gets the supportive units built faster and cheaper.
And just a few blocks away from here, we have 2,000 people that sleep on the street every night in Skid Row that go unsheltered. The misery, the despair, and hopelessness that many of them suffer through on a nightly basis is truly heart-wrenching, and it must end.
But even the quicker construction will take a while. So a second proposal, the Motel Ordinance, will convert motels into temporary housing units with fewer permits.
Motels are infrastructure that already exists. They're often underutilized, and they could hold the key to creating housing right now for people.
Council District 8 city attorney has more motels than any district anywhere in the city. So we want you to drive around South L.A., make friends with some motel owners, and hopefully we can begin the process to have some conversions in our part of the city and all parts of Los Angeles.
So what kind of a difference will these proposals make? Well, city leaders say, for example, a 60-unit supportive housing development could save them about $1 million due to a streamlined process and shorter construction times under these new laws.
And then there's the difference the new laws will make to human beings.
The thing about supportive houses is I didn't know anything about this world. And every time I needed to find something out about how to navigate the world, you know, there was somebody there who was paid to be there to tell me how to do it, you know? And that's the only reason I was succeeding because I had somebody to go to.
So far, more than 1,200 units are in the works thanks to HHH money. But there's 10,000 more units to be built in the next 10 years. That means 10,000 more lives to be changed, and it can't come quickly enough. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
Councilmember Mitchell Farrell introduced two amendments to the bills. One helps protect cultural lands while still expediting the construction of new housing. The other amendment ensures motel modifications are still in line with city standards. The city is working closely with the transgender community to bridge the discrimination gap. Rasha Goell has more.
Just two weeks ago, I was walking down the street here downtown with my husband, hand in hand, and something happened to me that hadn't happened to me in 30 years. Somebody cried out "faggot!" And it was jarring because I hadn't heard that for quite a number of years. And it was a reminder, it was a wake-up call, that we had a lot of work to do here as well as everywhere else.
City Controller Ron Galperin shared a personal story citing it as an example of the LGBTQ ignorance that still exists. He was among those that attended the Transgender Day of Visibility, where activists were recognized for the impacts they have made in the transgender community. Shayla Demure, founder of the Unique Women's Coalition, an organization led by Black trans women, shared some inspiring words.
It is important to embrace differences. And once you get over thinking that there are so many differences, you realize that there's so many similarities. And we're all human, and we should be able to occupy space together.
Councilmembers Mitchell Farrell and Mike Bonin introduced a motion last year which addresses issues that are important to the trans community.
Today in council, we'll have a vote on that report, which is believed to be the first of its kind voted on by a major municipality anywhere in the country.
The Transgender Advisory Council was formed in 2016 to better help serve the needs of the transgender community. Member Here's Tell Me, there are still many issues impacting transgender individuals.
How we treat our community and how we treat ourselves is with respect and just finding different ways to just make it better.
Discrimination, hate crimes, the issues. Also, employment is a big issue, okay? Shelters and housing is a big issue also for us and also healthcare.
The message again: acceptance of one another. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goell for L.A. this week.
City council unanimously approved recommendations to address issues facing the transgender community. L.A.'s 911 system just got a digital boost thanks to a push by Councilmember Paul Krikorian. As the city launches its Text 911 system, the new texting option may have already saved lives. Anna Marcos joins us from the 911 dispatch center with more. Anna?
Yana, help from the city's 911 emergency system is now just a touchscreen away. Residents can now text as well as dial in their 911 emergencies, which just gives more help out to more Angelinos.
Do you need a paramedic now?
This is 911 today, and this was 911 50 years ago when the emergency system first began. Anyone remember the old-school switchboards? Or how about, yikes, finger dialing? But this is the 911 of the future, and it all starts with texting.
I think this is going to be, it's going to be a real lifesaver. There's people who are hearing impaired, people who are speech impaired, people who are in fear for their life if they make sound, people who are trying to conceal themselves from a gunman, for example.
911 texting is pretty new in L.A., but it may have already saved lives. Before it had even been announced last year, dispatchers testing the system got a live text from a woman in trouble.
That person was trapped in another room and couldn't talk on the phone because her boyfriend was on the outside of the door with a gun and was ready to shoot her.
Dispatchers were able to alert officers who rushed to the home.
They made entry into the location and took the person into custody.
So they saved her?
We believe that that was a life that was saved, yeah.
Since then, Text 911 has fielded some 12,000 texts. It was Councilmember Paul Krikorian who first introduced a motion three years ago to launch 911 texting. And he says the future promises picture texting, mapping, and more.
If somebody, for example, could take a photograph of a potential suspect, text that as well. There's mapping options that could be involved. There's any number of uses.
In the meantime, the calls and the texts keep coming. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The entire county of L.A. now uses the 911 text system, making it the largest metro area in the country to do so. An iconic museum is finally under construction. Rasha Goell has more on this museum that will explore the power of visual storytelling. We are home! Thank you, Los Angeles!
The force was strong as Star Wars creator George Lucas and his wife Melody Hobson joined city officials to break ground for the Lucas Museum of Narrative Arts in Exposition Park. Their hope is to inspire a future generation of creatives.
I believe in all kinds of art, and I believe all kinds of art have a right to exist. And I think it's important to have a museum that, I used to jokingly say, supports all the orphaned arts that nobody else wants to see, but everybody loves. So that's my dream for this.
We picked Exposition Park because we wanted a museum campus. And George talked again and again about the fact that he wanted a child to have choices when they went to visit a museum and be able to visit the great museums that are here already that stand for unbelievable great education and have become great institutions in their own right was something that we thought was very, very attractive.
Museum board member and filmmaker Steven Spielberg also showed his support. Lucas and Hobson have privately funded the project with a gift of over $1 billion. Beijing-based architect Ma Young Song has designed the modern spaceship-y building and 11 acres of new park and garden space.
We want to create something that interests a lot of young people, students, local community. So we want to kind of design a building very inspiring, very, you know, making people curious what's inside.
The nonprofit museum's five levels of approximately 300,000 square feet will highlight gallery space and hundreds of fine and popular art pieces. Work in photography and cinematic art, and not only from Star Wars, will also be showcased. The facility will feature two state-of-the-art movie theaters, restaurants, digital and editing classrooms, and a free library.
Art exists to inspire, to touch, to educate, to excite. And is the capital of the entertainment industry, but I would argue the creative capital of the world with the greatest world-class museums anywhere. Here, we have a chance to seize that and say it's not just for a few, it is for everyone.
Placing the museum in South Los Angeles aims to fulfill the goal of inspiring, engaging, and educating a broad and diverse visitor ship.
The investment is going to strengthen the arts education to an underserved community. I grew up in a nice district where projects like Lucas Museum, the L.A. Football Soccer Stadium were unimaginable, unimaginable. Today, they're putting us on the map and allowing us to rise to our full potential.
And who knows, perhaps the museum may help inspire the making of another George Lucas or Steven Spielberg. Now, the museum has already begun construction and is anticipated to open in late 2021. In Exposition Park, I'm Rasha Goell for L.A. this week.
The Lucases settled on L.A. for the site of their museum 14 months ago after considering the cities of Chicago and San Francisco. L.A.'s biggest science fair is in full swing. People are participating in workshops with topics ranging from marine conservation to the art of beer-making. Gil Reyes reports from one kid-friendly event where the future of our city is highlighted.
Today, they're students; tomorrow, they're scientists. But only if given the tools, says TV's resident expert, Bill Nye the Science Guy.
Providing them with what they need is not only a great responsibility, I view it as a great opportunity, an opportunity for all of us to, dare I say it, change the world.
One opportunity takes place through the month of April. It's called City of STEM, a hands-on festival of science, technology, engineering, and math programs at various locations throughout Los Angeles, including here at City Hall. Mayor Eric Garcetti mentions another opportunity: his L.A. Tech Talent Pipeline.
We took job training dollars that we get from the federal government and in partnership with the Bixel Exchange, our youth source centers, and nearly 40 partners from SNAP to the Dollar Shave Club, we've placed more than 100 young Angelinos in tech internships. And I'm not talking about like get-the-coffee kind of internships, but real skills that can lead to real jobs.
Jobs in agriculture, information technology, electric vehicle, and spacecraft manufacturing. The sky, or dare we say, the heavens are the limit in the city of angels.
We can lead the world in the innovations and technologies that people everywhere will soon need. Our economy will grow, and our students will leave the world better than they found it. So get to work, people.
At City Hall, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The biggest of all STEM events will be happening Saturday, April 28, at the Columbia Memorial Space Center in Downey. Kids of all ages are welcome, and it's free. For a full listing of events, log onto cityofstem.org. City leaders are one step closer to regulating street vendors. A new traffic signal gets the green light in Council District 1. And improvements are coming to South Park Rec Center. All these stories in City Beat. The L.A. City Council moved forward with a proposed sidewalk vending ordinance, but rejected a provision that would have given nearby brick-and-mortar business owners the power to veto vendor licenses. The business veto had been strongly opposed by many vendors. Instead of the veto power, the Economic Development Committee moved forward with a plan that would establish a formal hearing process allowing adjacent property owners to voice concerns and submit appeals to proposed sidewalk vendors based on health and safety issues. The proposed ordinance would create a sidewalk vending ordinance program that would fully regulate the new industry. The regulations would limit many blocks to two vendors, but would allow for the creation of special vending zones where more would be allowed. Councilmember Gil Sadio continues to improve public safety in Council District 1 with the activation of a full traffic signal along Temple Street. Temple Street has been identified as a high-injury network street, which has a high concentration of traffic collisions. In support of the mayor's Vision Zero initiative, which brings together transportation engineers, police officers, advocates, and policymakers to work towards creating safer streets, this is the latest safety improvement at the council member's request.
We're making sure that with this new crosswalk that we maximize the safety for young boys and girls as they go to school, as they walk to the park, as they walk through their neighborhood, that we can control the traffic.
The Department of Rec and Parks, along with Councilmember Curran Price, the City of L.A.'s Department of Public Works Bureau of Engineering, broke ground of the historic South Park Recreation Center Park. The renovation of the historic east area of the park is part of the master plan that will restore one of the city's oldest parks. This 19-acre park currently serves 21,000 residents living within a half-mile walking distance and provides an array of recreational programs. Improvements include the restoration of the historic Palm Walkway with new paving, picnic tables and benches, new walkways, turf play area, outdoor fitness equipment, smart irrigation system, and more. The project is expected to be completed in spring of 2019. Better basketball courts for kids to play in? You bet, as the L.A. Clippers give the city a multimillion-dollar gift to renovate crumbling structures. Anna Marcos joins us from the Jim Gilliam Rec Center with more. Anna?
Nobody is more excited about the plan to renovate all of L.A.'s city basketball courts than the L.A. Clippers mascot, Chuck the Condor. Well, except for maybe the L.A. Clippers owner himself, Steve Ballmer, who apparently loves basketball and kids.
Every kid who gets fired up about basketball gets me fired up. So I'm just incredibly excited to see kids out there hooping.
Clippers owners are donating $10 million to give all 344 basketball courts and L.A.'s Department of Recreation and Parks a little rehab, including new floors, scoreboards, basketball rims, and more.
For them, it's not about just winning or losing. It's about contributing to our community.
The kids look pretty excited, too. I mean, come on, playing with Clippers guard Lou Williams is a dream come true for any hoopster.
I shook Lou Williams' hands. He even said he's gonna break Patty Mills' ankles. I feel good about, I feel good about it. I just feel like it's a blessing for the Clippers to come over here out of all places.
That Chuck sure gets into everything. He attempts a few hoops here, as does Mayor Eric Garcetti. But mayor, you gotta be careful when you pick on the young whippersnappers.
Oh, well, I mean, I beat him, so like, it didn't really matter. It was fun, though.
Thanks to efforts by the mayor and First Lady of L.A., the number of girls playing sports has increased in the last several years from 22% to 45%. Now, as the city gears up for the 2028 Olympics and Paralympics in L.A., Mayor Garcetti wants to get even more kids involved in sports.
I didn't want to just bring the Olympics and the Paralympics here home to Los Angeles. I wanted to make sure that every young Angelino had a place on the field and on the court. And for those young Angelinos back there, they can set their sights to 2028 when they might win a gold medal in their own backyard.
But for many, this is about more than just the sport.
These experiences build self-esteem, confidence, leadership, cooperation, fair play, and friendship.
I played my very first basketball game in a community center. I had a coach in my neighborhood that took a liking to me. I was a troubled youth, and on weekends, he would come get me from 3 o'clock from when school was out. I was with him from 3 o'clock when school was out to Monday morning at 7:00 a.m. to make sure I stayed out of trouble.
Who knows, maybe one of these kids is a Lou Williams in the making or even a future 2028 Olympic medalist. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The program Girls Play L.A. is the initiative that's driven more girls to take part in City of L.A. sports programs. Well, give back to your community during a tree planting, enjoy a book fair for the kids, and get a taste of the unique flavors of L.A.'s East Side. All this and this week's Things to Do. Roll up your sleeves and grab a shovel, Angelinos. Councilmember Paul Krikorian, City Plants, and other city departments and partners invite you to a day of climate and community action. Come for the tree planting, stay for the Environmental Resource Fair and celebration. This year, 150 trees will be planted near the Victory and Vinland Recreation Center. Following the tree planting, City Plants and Partners will host a community fair with food, music, hands-on educational exhibits, and family-friendly activities. For more info, visit cityplants.org or call 213-473-9950. The event takes place Saturday, April 28, from 8:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Councilmember Gil Sadio and CD1 Partners are proud to bring you the Day of the Child and Little Book Festival, an event to celebrate children and child literacy filled with food, raffles, face painting, circus, art show, and books, all absolutely free to the community. The fun takes place on Sunday, April 29, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Levitt Pavilion located at MacArthur Park, 2230 West Sixth Street. Taste of the East Side is an annual one-day outdoor food and drink festival hosted at the historic Los Angeles River Center and Gardens. Set in this lush, historic architectural gem, the event is a celebration of the evolving and diverse cuisine of one of L.A.'s most distinct and compelling regions. Through tastings, demonstrations, and family events, Taste of the East Side highlights not only the great food available at the many diverse eateries in this region, but also a drive towards sustainable practices and healthy lifestyles for families and communities. Absolutely all proceeds from the event go to benefit local nonprofit organizations. The event takes place at the Los Angeles River Center and Gardens, located at 570 West Avenue, 26. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at L.A. this week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityv.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
What if a disaster strikes without warning? What if life as you know it has completely turned on its head? What if everything familiar becomes anything but? Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kid, make a plan, be informed today.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, April 25th. If you'd please, uh, take your seat. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonn, Boisquen, Oso, Deangler, Inter, excuse me, Englander, Harris, Tossen, Bizar, Caress, Corin, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rude, Wesson, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Rodriguez moves. Ofero seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Abanin moves. Busquenno seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Item 13 to this Friday, April 27th, and to continue Item 1O, O as in Oscar, to May 25th.
Okay, sole order. Continue.
Very good, sir. Uh, Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing. I'm sorry, we do have, uh, cards on that matter.
Well, let's hold that item and move forward.
Very good, sir. That brings us to Items 2 through 19. There are items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for Items 3 and 15 have been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's, uh, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, move on to the next section of items.
Very good, sir. And Item 3, that ordinance will go over one, one week for recon, excuse me, for a second read and let's reconsider later today with 12 members. Uh, that brings us to Items 20 through 22. There are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Cards on all items, sir.
Okay, continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Uh, items called special are general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, why don't we, uh, take a, a few cards? We'll take a few cards for the public this time. Let me get Mr. Robinson and Mr. Gus. General public comment, please come forward. Richard, I thought I saw you. Yes, sir.
Honorable President, Members, Richard Robinson. African-American blacks are part American native in general. Sir, racism sickens me. California belonged to Mexico long before Donald Trump's family moved here from Europe. He wants to build a wall and send hard-working people back to Mexico. There is a lady standing on a pedestal in New York Harbor. She has a torch of freedom in her hand. At the base of the statue, it reads, "Send us those yearning to be free." Millions of Americans, original Americans, my cousins, should be allowed amnesty, not deportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gus, please come forward.
Good morning, Councilmembers Daniel Gus. I write for City Watch and some other outlets. Last Friday, Mr. Krikorian said something absolutely false, absolutely outrageous, and untrue. Mr. Krikorian declared, he, he actually exaggerated the number of violent gun deaths in the United States by 20%, as shown by the document his office provided to me, as shown by the BBC. He did not correct it yet. So this morning, I got an email from the Disabled American Veterans, which shows that he understated the deaths of American veterans by 300%. If Mr. Krikorian does not correct the record, I will write an article showing that the Disabled American Veterans and the VA takes exception with your falsification of veteran deaths in the United States. Mr. Krikorian didn't lie. He did not tell the truth. He needs to correct it, or I will.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Herman? Items 1, 20, 21, and 22. Mr. Herman?
Mr. Chair, the local emergency by the mayor dated Mr. Chair, the local emergency by the mayor dated back in 2017 regarding the wildfires up in Mr. Englander's constituency, those six thousand five hundred goddamn acres burned because you did not provide housing for the homeless. And then you throw the blame on the homeless people simply for lighting a fire for six thousand five hundred acres. This never would have occurred, and you would not have caused all these insurance liability. Now, these insurers need to come in here and sue the city of Los Angeles for liability, knowing and acknowledging that you set homeless people in encampments in the burned areas to create a fire. Now, if I were wrong, wah-wah-wah-wah-wah-wah, that stupid-ass attorney would say, "Shut up, he's off-topic, Mr. Chair, get him back on the topic." But local emergency is therefore necessary, Mr. City Attorney, and that's why Mitchell Englander's not sitting there, because he doesn't want to take responsibility on the wildfires that prevented me, a homeless gentleman, from sleeping in an encampment in a wild area. Like the gentleman before me, Pryor, said, "I didn't come on a boat to America. I was already in America, an American citizen."
And so to instruct the general manager under the emergency department, you should pay for all the liability, cost, injury, and emotional distress upon every customer in the city and in the state of California for the repercussions you brought upon them with these declarations of local emergency fires. Do you understand that, Keebler? Do you understand that? Now, on item twenty-two, it's not important. Now, let me go to the last item, twenty-two. Relative to amending prior council actions of July 2017, I'll stay on topic and read it exactly as it said on the agenda, to amend prior fucking council fucking actions, July fucking twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen, fucking December fourth, twenty-seventeen, relative to the fucking allocations for general city purposes. Now, if I was wrong, I would cunt myself right now and bleed all over you. Hey, that's some good noise effects, Mr. Chair.
Stay on topic.
So, as you see, as I'm instructed, stay on topic. Due to the city's mental health and my mental health, I declare this jean day, dress in red, and let's be-
Okay, uh, now let's go to this general public comment one minute.
Now, based on case code BA two thirty-six, three twenty-seven for the record, I'm declaring penal code eleven ninety-two point seven C a serious felony when you dress to impress in your tight, nice, bright jeans. However, penal code felony record six six four slash two six one parentheses A, other than four A, is a felony. Now, when David Rue decided to sleep with an unconscious woman that night, that evening, that day, he should have thought about his sobriety test. Never sleep with a sleeping unconscious woman, especially when she's in some fine, nice, tight denim jeans. So to declare LA denim jeans, stop dressing to impress, and keep your goddamn pants on, because you never know of a politician, and his short term, might end up raping you like David Rue tried raping me.
Thank you. Antonia Ramirez, twenty, so she'll get two minutes, twenty, twenty-two, and then general
One moment, sir, please, uh, bear with me here. Um, oh, wonderful. Well, uh, Mr., um, on twenty-two, Mr. Wesson and, um, another council member want to embrace race. How could you embrace race when you're not enforcing the rule of law? We got a whole bunch of fucking wetbacks and gangbangers who torment, subject us to daily harassment, attacks, vandalism, and theft. Where are you enforcing the, the, the law? Remove the scumbag wetbacks and gangbangers and all the violent offenders, and then you will have peace and safety and equality, and people will love each other. But the bottom underlying fear, again, is fear. The bottom denominator is fear. People are angry, they're tortured every day, harassed, they are terrorized, they're afraid of going out of their homes, until you enforce the rule of law and send these fucking scumbag wetbacks, come, me, caca, chango, shit-
Okay, now you have to go to another, Ms. Ramirez now go to another item. Ms., Ms. Ramirez now go to another item, you spoke your minute.
Thank you very much. Can we go over to public comments? God bless Donald Trump and God bless America.
Okay, give her one, give her her minute for public comment.
Thank you very much, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm asking you, please, not to donate any money to Nuestra Señora de Los Ángeles, a Catholic church, um, at five thirty-five North Main Street, Los Angeles, California. Um, many other staff are, in fact, gangbangers and wetbacks. They are gobbling all the donations, that includes money. Ladies and gentlemen, the homeless people aren't getting blankets, aren't getting the resources, aren't getting any funding or help. They get thrown out, attacked, or beaten by the staff at La Placita, a refuge for the homeless. They get attacked and beaten and thrown out. That's what's going on at La Placita. What happened to the millions of daughters of donations? People, homeless, military veterans, even blacks who just came out of jail, or whites, they need change of clothes, they can't get clothes, they can't get food, they can't get a cup of coffee. So I'm asking you, please, ladies and gentlemen, stop donating to these scumbag Catholic priests and terrorists who terrorize the homeless and throw them out. God bless-
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, items one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and general public comment.
Congratulations, African-Americans, on the white racist scale, you have one group more than you.
Stay on, Mr., Mr., Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, on topic.
Uh, off, off-topic. That's his job, to decide, uh, who's off-topic and who's not.
Items one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay. Item, uh, twenty. You see what, well, finally, we are going to declare the wildfire an emergency. Wow! It didn't take you long. We had the, the fire alarm, uh, in, in this building when a pipe burst. It took you about twenty minutes to, half an hour to evacuate the bu, building. A wildfire has burned six and a half thousand acres. No city in America has ever burned six and a half thousand acres. You win. You win the award for, uh, being absolutely out of control. Now, uh, twenty, twenty-one, this is the four hundred and seventy-six acres that, uh, that burned? And, uh, on the cali, uh, fire, fire, fire. You jump right on the fire months later. But when Leonard Maltin shows up, you give him a half an hour.
On topic, Mr. Walsh, you want to go to your general public comment?
I'll go to, uh, general public comment now. Okay. Where's the mayor? Oh, he was jerking off in Iowa. Hi, I'm the mayor of New, of, of Los Angeles. Los Angeles? Never heard of it. Uh, let me tell you right now, the mayor has two first ladies. He has his wife, he's married to, and he has Glenn Dake, G-L-E-N-D-A-K-E. His, uh, what, what does Glenn Dake do? Well, he's a, uh, he's a member of the Metropolitan Water District. How did he get that job? By being the mayor's gardener. The ma, uh, Garcetti, I mean, Garcetti as the president of the United States? He'd be cornholed by, uh, by the Russian premier. Of course, if he could pay for it. Not, not the mayor, the Russian premier.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, thank you. Okay, Ms. Martinez, uh, we've gotten through most of the, uh, public comment, but I'd like to defer to you for our first presentation. I'm coming back, Ms. McAllister, I'm coming back. Everybody will be given a chance to speak.
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning, colleagues.
In fact, shh. Can we be, have some quiet, please? Okay, Ms., uh, Martinez, floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm proud to stand here in support of Denim Day. Sexual assault and sexual violence have been a huge issue in this country. But over the last year, I feel we had, we, as a society, have finally started to wake up and speak out. Looking at the statistics, I'm appalled. One in three women around the world will be raped, beaten, coerced into sex, or otherwise abused in their lifetime. Fifty-four percent of rapes are never-
One second, Mr. Herman, one second. Mr. Herman, last warning. Make one more sound, I'm gonna remove you from these chambers. I let you speak, now you're gonna sit down and be quiet and listen to others. Last warning. Go ahead, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you.
Wait, what did you say? Sergeants, remove Mr. Herman, remove him right now. Let's just go and remove Mr. Herman. Remove Mr. Herman, please, and remove him quickly.
You're such a tyrant.
No, why don't you just get out? When you speak, we're quiet, you're gonna have to show the same respect. Sergeants, get another sergeant, let's help him find the exit quickly.
... connection to, to Rue's date rape. I thought we were lovers, Herman. I've always loved you, Herman. That you used to me, stabbed me in the back, Herman. I've always loved you, Herman.
Herman is continuing to shout as he leaves, as usual.
I'm walking forward this time, I'm still slow, 'cause I'm disabled.
And he's still disrupting our meeting as he leaves.
Penal code, remember, penal code. I'm not the one that can-
And he's still shouting and delaying our business.
Okay, uh, Ms. Martinez, I apologize, and for those of you that are here, I apologize. Let's start this all over again, this is a very important issue. Again, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am proud to, proud to stand here in support of Denim Day. Sexual assault and sexual violence have been a huge issue in this country. And over the last year, I feel that our society has finally started to wake up and speak out. Looking at the statistics, I'm appalled that one in three women around the world will be raped, beaten, coerced into sex, or otherwise abused in their lifetime. Fifty-four percent of rapes are never reported, and only one in four rapes ever leads to an actual arrest. For too long, our society has normalized rape culture. Last year, it seems like every time you turn on the news, that we saw one powerful man after the other paying out for sexual harassment and sexual assault that they had inflicted on someone else. If it's happening in the highest levels of corporate and entertainment world, can you imagine how pervasive the problem is in our own communities? In communities and industries that don't always get a spotlight? From the mus, to, from music to movies, our kids have been growing up thinking certain behaviors are okay. If a woman dresses a certain way, she must be permissive. If a woman said no, what she really meant is yes. Many of what we know, many of you know that my passion around ending human trafficking has to do with the fact that no one should ever think it's okay to purchase a person for sex. Since when did it become okay to purchase a woman or a child for sex? Why do men think it's okay? Why do we, what did we do wrong in teaching our boys right from wrong? Patriarchy is what allows rape culture and sexual violence to exist. Patriarchy is what led men to feel entitled to sexually harass women walking down the street. Patriarchy is what leads men to believe that the power, that they have power over another person. Being advocates for ending sexual violence and the system that perpetuates it is a constant collective effort of all of us to make sure it ends. So today, I want us to use this day, and I want to invite my colleagues, and those in the audience, and those listening at home, to remember that education begins at home. Join me in teaching the next generation that we must have greater respect for women and for one another. Call-out behavior when you see it, cheat boys early on about consent, and challenge men in your life. Rape culture ends with you, it ends with me, and it ends with us. I'd like to commend Peaceover Violence for continuing to push the conversation forward, and for ensuring that the next generation grows up fighting this issue by en, by including young people and young advocates. I'd like to introduce Anthony Lopez and Lauren O'Hara from the Peaceover Violence Organization, as well as Leslie, a youth advocate from Stop Students Teaching Organizing Peace Club, and Miguel Contreras Learning Center. Can you please give them a round of applause?
Welcome, welcome. Please come forward.
Good morning, councilmembers and audience members. My name is Anthony Lopez, and I am a Violence Prevention Program Coordinator with Peaceover Violence. I would like to start by sharing a quote by Angela Davis. "I am no longer accepting the things I cannot change, I am changing the things I cannot accept." I am truly inspired by these recent demonstrations and student-led movements occurring throughout the nation. This demonstrates that our youth are tired of the perpetual violence that plagues our nation. They will organize and mobilize their communities that they deeply care about to not only address, but take proactive steps towards preventing sexual, domestic, gun, gang, and all other forms of violence that impact their communities. We are gathered here today because of Denim Day, and continuing this ongoing conversation about preventing sexual violence in our relationships, communities, and society. Many of the youth that you know might also be participating in some Denim Day activity, presentation, or rally at their school during advisory, lunch, or after-school time. Some of these schools include Miguel Contreras Learning Complex, schools such as Robert F. Kennedy Community School. I work directly with students at these schools through an after-school club that we sponsored called StopGlops, Students Together Organizing Peace. I have also witnessed firsthand the passion, dedication, and commitment that these students demonstrate while planning and organizing their Denim Day activities on their respective campus. At Peaceover Violence, we educate our youth about the importance of understanding the roots of violence, being able to identify warning signs of an unhealthy relationship, healthy relationship practices, sexual assault, intersectionality, being an up-sander, and other topics as well. We empower our youth to find their voices and begin to challenge and change the things they cannot accept. I am proud to stand behind our youth and support them in every step of the way. Our youth, here locally, are also taking a stand in stating that sexual violence is not permitted on their campus, community, or society. We must hear our students and work directly with them as equal partners to create effective change. Through their actions, I can see that our youth are stating, "I am no longer accepting the things I cannot change, I am changing the things I cannot accept." Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Leslie Martinez, and I'm a junior at Los Angeles College of Global Studies at Miguel Contreras Learning Complex, a local high school in LAUSD. I have been part of students, uh, Student Led Club called Students Together Organizing Peace for about three years. With the help of Peaceover Violence Prevention staff, we have engaged students and staff from other schools in our community to join our efforts in creating community free from sexual assault and, and domestic violence. Some of our activities include connecting the issue of sexual assault to homelessness as a, as we continue to host community drives. With the help from, of Peaceover Violence and school staff, we have had fundraisers in our school with different advisories. We have, um, built packages that consist of food, water, and hygiene supplies, uh, along with, uh, a list for the homeless to seek, to seek hope. We have, we have also, um, collaborated with different organizations to put together events to bring awareness. In our community, we have made posters, pins, and activities- In our community, we have made posters, pins, and activities to inform other students the importance of Denim Day. During lunch, we set up activities such as games and fashion shows where we explain and show that no matter what we wear is never an invitation or an excuse for rape. We have also done community and culture events that aim towards building a community free from sexual and domestic violence, such as Day of the Dead, where we engage our community and set up presentations, altars, activities such as face painting, artistic dancers, and provide a safe space for community dialogue around the issue of sexual assault and domestic violence. Can our youth make a change? Yes, we can, and we hope we can support, we could get the support from adult allies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Over two decades ago, a rape conviction was overturned because the young woman was wearing tight jeans. The court determined that tight jeans cannot be removed without cooperation, thus implying consent. The denim defense was born on that day, but so was a movement. Since then, people all over the world wear jeans on Denim Day as a symbol of protest against victim blaming and sexual violence. We say rape culture ends with me and you. And we have seen in the last year the issue of sexual violence, harassment, and its pervasiveness has inundated the mainstream media and headlines, affecting industry after industry. We are at a pivotal time where we not only can change the conversation, but we can make a cultural shift in our society that is fundamental. And we can change how we handle this violence and the repercussions of harassment, abuse, assault, or rape. Which makes us an incredibly critical year for funding much-needed sexual violence services and education. We are at this critical juncture as a society, so let's join together. We have the opportunity to take this heightened awareness of the Me Too movement and the now that we are in and truly create that societal change and healing. But we need your support to do it. Take action. Sponsor and directly support crucial healing services for survivors of sexual violence and expand Peace Over Violence's capacity to provide sexual violence prevention and education. Give, and today you answer the overwhelming call for change, help, and healing. Give and advocate for change, break the silence, and support survivors. Give, and you engage others with positive transformative cultural policy. Today, we raise awareness and dispel myths about sexual violence and harassment, assault, and rape. But today, let's make it into tomorrow and the next day and the next day after that. I thank everyone here for their support, their endorsement, and also, once more, to engage and to give. This is a critical time, and we truly need your help and your voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, can we just give another big round of applause to these young, amazing leaders that are leading the way and the just generation of advocates on their campuses? Thank you very much for being here. And on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I want to present this recognition to Peace Over Violence and declare April 25th as Denim Day. Congratulations. Continue to engage young people, and we're here to support you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Thank you. Mr. Bloomingfield, I almost recognized Mr. Rue by accident. But I would like, I would like to defer to Mr. Bloomingfield at this time.
Keep the dogs in front. They're the good photo. So, welcome, everybody. As I'm sure everybody knows, the week of April 23rd is World Week for Animals in Laboratories, and I am pleased today to honor the Rescue and Freedom Project. I especially want to thank our four-legged friends for being so patient today and so adorable. I know that they have endured much worse in their lives, and today, we recognize that. And we recognize that the people who have adopted these folks, let's give them all a big hand. Now, the Rescue Freedom Project was previously known as the Beagle Freedom Project, and it's a US-based nonprofit that was founded in 2004. The charity saves animals all around the globe from laboratory experiments, hoarding cases, the meat trade, unique captivity, cruelty, and death row. The charity saves animals all around the globe from all these things. And the organization itself aims to foster a cruelty-free culture that celebrates the rescue lifestyle. They do this through their app, which is called Cruelty Cutter, which allows users to get an immediate response about a product's animal testing status and through their signature legislation called the Beagle Freedom Bill, which mandates post-research release of cats and dogs and has been passed in seven states, including, of course, California. Today, we get to see five of the loving animals that were rescued from these research laboratories. And before I introduce the founder and director of the Rescue and the Freedom Project, I want to introduce three middle-school-aged children who want to share some important information with you about their experience. So, actually, four children, I believe. Ella Warner, Tuesday Mafdavi, Felix Hamstreet, and Joss Liberto. You guys want to each say a few, couple of words?
Come forward. Hi, welcome.
Hello, President Weston and council members. My name is Tuesday, and I volunteer at Rescue Freedom Project. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk to you about animal testing and experimentation during World Week for Animals in Laboratories. I am speaking to you about the horrific practice of animal testing. Animal testing is an outright cruel, outdated, and unnecessary practice. Animals such as rabbits, dogs, cats, guinea pigs, and mice, and monkeys are subject to terrible abuse such as being forced to breathe in and eat harmful chemicals, injected with toxins, given diseases, deprived of food and water, physically restrained, intentionally injured, burned, and other painful experiments where painkillers are not given to them. Not only are they being abused, but they're also being neglected. These animals live in cages that they're barely able to turn around and they've never seen sunlight or touched grass. The worst part of this is that this is all useless and can be prevented. The way drugs and chemicals react in animals is often very different than in people, which makes having accurate results from animal testing almost impossible. According to the US Food and Drug Administration, nine out of ten experimental drugs fail in clinical studies because we cannot accurately predict how they will behave in people based on laboratory and animal studies. For example, while testing TGN-412, it was proven safe in animals, but in human trials, it almost killed six people. The monkeys were able to handle 500 times the amount that humans were given. Another example is when Alexander Fleming first tested penicillin on rabbits, the drug had no therapeutic effect and was shoved away for more than a decade. Now we know that rabbits won't absorb penicillin the way we do. Also, Vioxx was deemed safer after being tested on beagles and monkeys, but it caused heart attacks and heart disease in over 140,000 people. Through our advances in science, they are able to replace animal testing with alternatives that are better, faster, cheaper than using animals. Animal testing is an outdated avenue to gather data, and the practice should no longer be supported. If you don't support animals dying in microsoaps, sandshoes, and various cleaning products, you should go cruelty-free.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ella Warner, and I am 13 years old. I am the president of Rescue and Freedom Project Kids. It was the Thanksgiving of 2011 when my mom and I discovered Rescue and Freedom Project. That was the day 40 beagles were released from a laboratory in Spain and flown back to the United States. I will never forget how scared they looked and when they took their very first steps on grass. But soon, they were running and playing, maybe for the first time in their whole entire lives. That was also the day our whole world became cruelty-free, starting with my family, my friends, my teachers, and even attempt at my school. And now we are here today to encourage you to embrace this lifestyle. Cruelty-free just means you refuse to buy cosmetics, cleaners, and other products that have been tested on animals. Many people think cruelty-free means spending more money on products and cosmetics, but that's not true. Often, the cruelty-free product is the generic brand and is actually cheaper. Rescue and Freedom Project started in 2010 with the rescue of two beagles from a laboratory. Since then, we have rescued over 1,000 animals of all kinds.
That's worth a round of applause. That's phenomenal. That is so phenomenal.
We brought some with us today. We have Mason, Yori, Elliot, Zoe, and Indy. To the labs, they are just numbers, which they actually have tattooed inside their ear. But now, they are individuals with names and families who love them. My mom and I also have a rescue laboratory beagle named Spanky. We couldn't bring him today, but this is him. When we first got him, he was very afraid of the wind and the doggy door and very loud noises. But now, he is just fine and a beloved family member. One day, Shannon Keith, the president of Rescue and Freedom Project, formed RFP Kids, and this is what we do. Our main goal with RFP Kids is to spread awareness. Our generation is the one that desperately needs to spread the word and teach the next generation about becoming cruelty-free and helping the animals who do not have a voice. One major thing RFP Kids did together was go to the California State Capitol to express the importance of the bill AB 147. This bill states that all healthy cats and dogs that are being tested on in California have to be given up to a rescue group instead of being killed after testing. This bill has been passed in seven states, including California, and actually was just signed by Maryland's governor yesterday. Rescue and Freedom Project has been rescuing animals for eight years now, and we will not stop. What we need now is your help to influence people about becoming cruelty-free. We are here to take a stand for the voiceless animals. Thank you.
Hi, Honorable Council, my name is Rosa Moreno, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of the animals here, the beagles, and also the animals that are not here. We, as humans, we've learned to love each other. We've learned to spread this love across the world and farther. Now, we have to spread it to these animals. These animals don't have voices like you and me. These animals can't speak up for each other like you and me. We're fighting against racism here in California, but we also should be fighting for the animals who can't speak up. This is not fair. It's not fair that we live in the United States where we, humans, get to speak on behalf of each other, and yet these animals don't. We have to speak up for them. How would you like to live in a cage? A five-by-five cage for the rest of your life? Having your child there, dying there, being tested on there, fed there, going to sleep there? That is, that's not a way to live. We have houses, and yes, some of us don't have houses or places to live, but we fight for them as well, just like we should be fighting for these animals. We love them. They're our best friends, or at least they are for me. I have a dog. He is my best friend. And like, it's just so sad to see how we're wearing, some people in the world, we're our best friends. We speak up for each other, and yet we're wearing them. That's not a way to live. That's so hypocritical. So, we need to stop that. We need to stand up for our best friends and for the other animals in the world, because this is not right. So, we gotta do this now, and we gotta do this today. Thank you.
Mr. Bloomingfield, where does Mr. Moreno live? I want to make sure he does not live in my district. He's a danger. This guy's got a future. Anyway, thank you for your words. Very inspiring. Next?
Hello, my name is Felix Hamstreet, and I'm a sixth grader from the Girls Academic Leadership Academy. Thank you for letting me speak here today regarding solutions to animal testing. There are many alternatives to animal testing. Here are a few. Human clinical testing is testing on humans who volunteer and is done in small, safe doses. In vitro studies, test human cells in test tubes and determine, to determine the safety of a drug for people. Robotic technology uses robots like the EPA's Tox-21 to study human cells and tissue in test tubes. This robot is very efficient and can complete up to 1,000 tests at once. Rescue and Freedom Project has come up with solutions, too. The Cruelty Cutter app is RFP's free app for identifying products that are tested on animals versus cruelty-free products. The app works by scanning a product's barcode to find out if it is tested on animals. The Cruelty Cutter app makes it easy to save animals. The Food and Drug Administration and the Environmental Protection Agency are working to reduce animal testing by replacing outdated regulations with new ones that use alternative testing methods that are cheaper, faster, and more effective than animal testing. At the federal and state level, bills are being discussed to end cosmetic testing on animals. In Congress, the Humane Cosmetics Act, HR 2790, is on the table to end the testing of cosmetics on animals and the sale of these products. There are similar bills in California and New York, and Councilmember Bloomingfield recently introduced a resolution to support them. But there is more we can do in Los Angeles. Today, Councilmember Bloomingfield is introducing the Cruelty-Free Los Angeles Policy. This measure will require all city offices to use cruelty-free products if alternatives to animal-tested products are available. Please take action and support this policy that will save animal lives and inspire many other citizens and cities to go cruelty-free. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, they may be middle-school kids, but their words are incredibly powerful. Thank you all for those incredible words. Yeah. Next, I want to bring up the founder of the Rescue and Freedom Project, Shannon Keith. Shannon is an activist attorney with an adjunct professorship at UCLA and Southwestern Schools of Law. Her career is so diverse, it includes exposing and suing animal abusers and much more. Also a filmmaker, she focuses on stopping the problem at its roots through educational documentaries and has won several awards for her groundbreaking films that have exposed animal cruelty. She's made several documentaries such as Behind the Mask, Skin Trade, and Sanctuary. These films explore the underground world of those activists who break the law to save animals, expose cruelty, fraud, and deception in the fur industry, and the threats to primates from entertainment, scientific, and exotic pet trades. She lives in Los Angeles with her two rescued dogs, her two rescued cats, and a revolving door of rescued foster animals. So, without further ado, Shannon.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us. I don't think I could do a better job than our Rescue Freedom Project Kids did. They were just amazing, right? We're so proud to be here, to be a Los Angeles-based nonprofit organization. Los Angeles has always been at the forefront of animal compassion, making the right decisions. And so, we're honored to be here. We're proud. I'm so proud of our staff, our kids, and our dogs, who have done such an amazing job today, very well behaved. These dogs were all rescued by us from laboratories across the world, not just in the United States, but abroad as well. They lived their entire lives inside of cages without ever seeing the sunshine, stepping on the grass, knowing a kind touch, having a treat. And here they are as amazing ambassadors for this cause. This is something, it's an idea. It's a great idea for not only animal welfare advocates, but for everybody, because it encompasses the circle of compassion that our kids so eloquently discussed, much better than I could. Councilmember Bloomingfield, we thank you so much. I wanted to give you a certificate. As well as your amazing staff, John Popash, thank you. Thank you so much, and I'll leave it to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, before I conclude, there are no additional speakers, but I did want to make a special mention of someone here, Matt Rozell. He is the Director of Campaigns and Policy for the Rescue and Freedom Project. You heard from his lovely daughter earlier. He heads up the education and legislative campaigns to empower people working toward replacing outdated cruel animal experimentation with non- replacing outdated cruel animal experimentation with non-animal humane technologies. And his background is in investigating animal cruelty, which has taken him an amazing array of places, behind the locked laboratory door of Boys Town Hospital and the Oregon National Primate Research Center, under the Big Top at Walker Brothers Circus, and inside almost every type of factory farm. He has secretly collected evidence to report the abuses. He has seen and done it all, some of it you don't even want to hear about. I mean, processing parts on the kill floor of the Omaha Slaughterhouse to rescuing fox pups from an Illinois farmer after a four-month investigation. He's committed, he's dedicated, and his work, his undercover work, has been featured on Nightline, CNN, The New York Times, Boston Globe, and The Washington Post. And he has worked very closely with me and my office on the motion that was mentioned and introduced today, which supports pending federal and state legislation to ban cosmetic testing on animals, and also acknowledges that industrial cleaning products are frequently tested on animals. So, this week, we've designated it as the World Week for Animals in Laboratories. It's not just us, it's around the world, and advocates around the world are focusing their attention on animal testing. We have our chance in Los Angeles to strengthen our precedent of fighting against animal testing by requiring that city departments and contractors use cruelty-free office supplies, such as cleaners, soaps, sanitizers, and other products. I have a motion to do just that, that will direct the departments to discontinue the purchase of non-cruelty-free supplies whenever viable non-animal test products are available. And in conclusion, I want to give you guys this certificate from the entire city council, everybody here in the horseshoe, to the Rescue and Freedom Project. Please accept this small token of appreciation. Let's give it up for the Rescue Freedom Project.
Mr. Bloomingfield, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bloomingfield, I just want to thank you for highlighting the importance of this incredibly important issue, and I wholeheartedly support this initiative. We live in absolutely Victorian and medieval times in terms of the way we treat our animal community, and the science just does not require that we test products on animals at all, ever. I could name the best friends I've had my whole life. There was Freckles, Pete, Ben, the first Max. There was Bruno and Fido, and then Miko, Dottie, Sky, and now my best friend is Speedy. He's my best friend in the whole wide world. And I was raised with animals, domestic and wildlife. It's part of my DNA. And I remember in eighth grade refusing to dissect a frog in science class, and then in college, refusing to experiment on mice in biology, because I just knew it was way wrong and inhumane and needless. From the three years I spent volunteering at the Wildlife Waste Station every Monday for three years, working with all the animals there, and every time I would walk by were the chimpanzees who had been experimented on, it was kind of soul-destroying every time I walked by and saw them. And, you know, that's the result of our reckless approach in the way we treat our animal community, and it's time for that to come to an end. So, I want to really commend the Rescue and Freedom Project. And to hear the youth at 12 years old say, "We want to leave the world a better place for the next generation," at age 12, that's incredibly fortifying for me. And I want to thank the youth for stepping up and making that case, because we have a responsibility to be better human beings, to be more humane in our approach to everything. And I think the test of us as a race will be how we do treat the defenseless, the sentient beings with no voice. That's a test of the quality of who we are as human beings, and that's the test that I strive to pass every day. So, I want to thank your wonderful group for the work you do and the influence that you're having on elected officials, and I hope it spreads from the state houses to Congress, and we get some bills passed to do something about, like I said, this absolutely medieval approach to the way we treat the animal world. So, thank you and congratulations.
And we want to thank Mr. O'Farrell. Speedy is a L.A. city rescue, and we thank you for that. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Bob, for bringing this forward, and all these wonderful beagles. They're ironically better behaved than many of our audience attendees at times, and could set a good example for them. There's never been a good reason for animal testing and so many of the other cruel practices that happen, not only in this country but worldwide. And it's interesting that Mr. O'Farrell and I had the same experience through the L.A. Unified School System and probably every other school system where you have to dissect animals as part of your curriculum. I actually was so angry about having to do that, which I didn't. That was one of the reasons why I ran for the L.A. School Board when I was in high school, and one part of my platform was to ban the requirement to participate in dissection as part of my platform. Now, 40 years or so later, I don't know if they've done that yet, but when I was first elected to the West Hollywood City Council 30 years ago, I had us do resolutions opposing animal testing at the state and federal level, and I know they've been activists ever since, as have I. This is such a great idea. I'm ashamed that I didn't think of it first, but I was, but I think I seconded it and honored to do so. I've been looking at what we could do at state and federal level, but that's always hard to impact. But the idea that we could do it here locally just by changing our own cleaning products, I think is an amazing one. I thank you, Bob, for bringing that to us and all your participants in the organization. And I've never seen so many wonderful beagles in one place. Even if it had no purpose and it was just to have the beagles, this would be worth it. Thank you so much.
All right, just give them one more round of applause. Back to you to wrap it up, Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, I'd like to recognize Mr. Sadio.
Joseph.
If you could stay a minute, we're gonna give him like a poster. Yeah, if you could sit and say. I'll be happy to invite you to our office, too.
You can go take pictures, and then we'll meet you.
Yeah, go take the pictures, but don't leave until you get the poster.
And we'll come back. Thank you.
Good to see you, always.
You know what, Alan, while they're exiting, why don't we do reconsideration and vote on the auras?
Very good, sir. That would be item number three.
Okay, let's, first vote is on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now, let's actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay. Mr. Sadio, in a minute, the floor will be yours. Mr. Sadio.
Yes, Mr. President, it's been a quite impressive morning. We've heard about important struggles and seen the future leadership of our city and our nation bring forth issues that are critical and timely. But perhaps there's no issue more timely and more critical to this city and to the nation as the issue of housing and homelessness. Homelessness is perhaps the moral issue of the day. It is one that is a scourge on the entire city, on the state and the nation. It is one in which we, for our incredible work and our incredible progress, still see it at every freeway exit, every off-ramp, at our malls, at our places where we go out in public, parks, et cetera. And it is really an issue for which is perplexing and vexing for us to solve. We're very fortunate in Los Angeles, because we have leadership at the grassroots level, at the level of people who really have boots on the ground and who deal with this every day. I want to commend them. I'm proud to be here to acknowledge and declare Renters' Day, but I want to commend the activists who are here, much like those we saw earlier, for having the courage to bring that struggle to this body, to engage in a very concrete way, to go beyond the mere politics of protest, and to actually move into constructing real public policy. And so, we're here to do that today. You will hear from them. Let me state a few facts that need to be acknowledged every day. In fact, there's a good article today in the front page of The LA Times that shows how we've housed 30,000 people in the last four years, yet homelessness continues to grow and housing remains a problem for all Angelenos. 60% of Angelenos are renters, and 60% of those renters are severely rent burdened. What does that mean? That they're paying up to 30% to 50% of their income is focused on their rent. We rank as one of the highest rent burden major cities in the nation. For the past three years, we've continued to bring this concern with respect to the burden of rent to this city, and in that time period, we've made incredible progress. And I think that's what's more significant about being here this morning, is the progress that's been made when we've brought the protests from out in the streets into here, the city council suites, if we may say that. We've done things that improved the quality of repairs that the city had, the ordinances that do that. We've done proposals and ordinances that impact the rent registry program, we're working with the Housing Department and with the Apartment Association, and I think that should be noted. We have helped to create and preserve affordable housing through the linkage fee, through inclusionary zoning, through the streamlining of the affordable housing development. We have revised provisions of the Ellis Act, and we cracked down on the cash-for-keys where landlords were utilizing the vulnerable circumstances of tenants to move them out and to take advantage of this difficult situation. These things don't happen without struggle, without courage, and without commitment, and that's why I'm happy to be here with these community leaders. Finally, let me acknowledge them specifically. We are joined today by the East L.A. Community Corporation, Encalinos Unidos, T.I.C.D.C., Power Works, Sage, ACT L.A., ACE, and finally, L.A. CAN. Let me invite up from Encalinos Unidos, David Fernandez, to address this.
Welcome. Welcome. Thank you very much, and to everyone here, as Councilmember Sadio mentioned, and which many of us already know from the essences of our being, housing is a very severe threat to our stability. So, I think it's very timely and urgent that not only do we recognize today as Renters' Day, but that we more, I think Renters' Day will be contradictory and even illusory if we do not continue taking the steps to defend the majority of tenants throughout the city of L.A. and beyond. In city of L.A., there are considerable protections, but they're not strong enough, and beyond the city of L.A., there are very few, if any, rental protections. So, I think there are several local and statewide initiatives that we can definitely support, and we're able to fuse both protests on the street with the decision-making that happens here in these walls, to be able to understand and repeal both the Ellis Act as well as Costa-Hawkins. So, I know that a coalition of us are here today to speak truth to this matter, and to say that although very few of us are here, these are realities that many of us deal with and struggle with on a daily basis. So, it's absolutely urgent that we don't only provide lip service, but that we do the real work of bettering policy for the majority. Thank you.
Next, Dagan Bayless from Sage.
My name is Dagan Bayless. I'm the Director of Organizing at Sage. I'd like to thank the council member and the council for acknowledging Renters' Day and acknowledging the severe crisis that faces the majority of people in our city who are renters and those who no longer have a home. I think we all agree that this is an enormous problem, a moral problem, as the council member named. And our coalition believes that we need to use all of the tools at our disposal, that we, the city, our city government, must do everything that we can on a number of different channels all at once, because the problem is so huge. Specifically, what we call for is to protect existing tenants, including by strengthening tenant protections like rent control, and we would love it if the council would, in the same way that they resolved to oppose SB 827, that they would resolve for the repeal of Costa-Hawkins. We believe that the council should do everything it can to limit rent burden, if not freeze the rent, because many people are at the edge of their capacity to sustain the rents that they have, and we feel that this represents a huge diversion of human potential and resources from other things that it could be doing. For instance, being active in other parts of the economy. If people are spending 80% of their incomes for rent, then they're not putting money into a lot of other sectors that could be more vital. We also would like to see action to preserve existing affordable housing through things like further regulations, further limits on the Ellis Act, limiting demolitions and condo conversions, because the majority of low-income renters are in naturally occurring affordable housing. And lastly, we feel that, and I think everybody here agrees, that the production of new affordable housing is absolutely critical, and we need to do what we can to speed that along. So, again, I'd like to thank the council for this resolution and for your partnership, and, you know, we look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you. And we'll be visiting the Housing Committee this afternoon to provide some more specific ideas. Thanks.
And finally, we want to hear from Steve Diaz from L.A. CAN. He is very familiar to all of us here in City Hall, has a long history of working with the council and the city and the community, most importantly, in advancing the rights of tenants and homelessness, and homeless people. Thank you.
Steve, come on forward, Steve.
Thank you, council member. I'll be really brief. It's a pleasure to be here on Renters' Day, a day where we saw courage, love, and passion throughout the presentations, and it's exactly that that's gonna take us to ensure that we keep L.A. housed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Sadio. All right. Mr. Previn, if we, Items 1, 2021, and 22, Eric Previn. Mr. Previn, if we, Items 1, 20, 21, and 22, Eric Previn.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from CD2. You got a nice set of leans up in there today, and, sir, it's very rare that we get a chance to personally thank you, but CD10, today, whatever is the date, April 25, 2018, it is CD10 who has the biggest, nastiest lean on our residents. So let's not, let's not suggest that you've lost your edge, sir. You are, you are right in there, nailing the people to the fence, so to speak. Now, it's only 6,200. We've seen bigger, but not a bad showing at all. And kudos to Mr. Price, who's got your ear right now as you play the little whisper game. He had one at 4,000, which is a little bit, a little bit, we can see more from him on a typical basis, so that's nothing to be boasting about, certainly. And we don't even see Mr. Marquis Taristo. It's good to see Weezer up in there with a couple. And CD7 cannot be discounted because Monica Rodriguez certainly knows how to bring a lean on her constituents just as well as the next guy. Doug Tripp has been doing an outstanding job over there, just tagging them one after the other, and he is relentless, he is relentless, sir. I know you know it. Now, we'll go on to Coretts's favorite item of the day, which is the Skirball Fire. It's always time to get Nicky Miner up in here and make a big kerfuffle, get a little plan together with Peter Sanders, and then create the illusion that a homeless guy started a fire that was obviously not started by a homeless guy, which we researched that very carefully. We had a lot of folks, and yet a lot of the media just nibbled on that one. I think you'll remember, sir, Mayor Garcetti stood up and said, you know, like terrorists, we can't get every single one, but we're going to try, we're going to try, deeply offensive to the people in the community who know that that's not why the fire up in Skirball started on that Caltrans property. It was never why. There aren't people even living where they said there were. But there was a big, I don't want to say conspiracy, because it sounds like, that's your line of work, not mine, but it was inappropriate, and it, no good tragedy should go to waste. And thank God, nobody got hurt in that fire, sir. And Coretts was up in the big room, the war room, with Ebenstein, looking to see if, you know, they could figure out a way to get the Waze app out of people's lives, because these people can't be using the public roadway. What's wrong with that? Well, sir, it's good that you're getting the emergency money, because we do want to put boots-on-the-ground firemen up in there every single day to make sure that we're staying safe, but we don't want firemen to behave like, like, like some kind of homeless police. That's just a weird activity. And when we asked to see the records about where all these alleged encampments were, boy, what came back was one of the most astonishing records, and I looked at a number of public records in my day, sir, I know you know that. This was one of the kookiest, they put it on like 29 separate pages, so each column, I mean, it was put together by, I would describe it as, that might be what you'd call a terrorist, because he's trying to block public view on something that I believe people have a real right to know and learn. People want to help, you know, people want to do things that are smart, and we appreciate where there are small efforts. I know one of the homeless characters who I've been in touch with was very...
Thank you. Just give him his minute.
Oh, you're going to give me the general, sir? Is he giving me the general? Fubble? Could you, yes or no, sir? You may got your own mic trick going backwards. Yes, I do get a minute. Okay, good. Thank you. I appreciate that. It's election time, sir, and Sheila Kuehl is running for third district supervisor, and she's being challenged by a great little candidate who I'd like you to take a look at. It's ericprevin.com, and you can have a look and see. What she's been up to is assuming the position, sir, no disrespect to you and all your comrades, the position of not stepping forward to have a debate. Now, why would she do that? Because she's so smart, Harvard-educated, because she doesn't want to face the music. What is the music? The music is, is that we're not doing that great a job, and Mark Ridley Thomas has his thumb on the scale, sir, I know you know what that means, the scale of the force of government to tip these things one way or the other. That's why when Mr. Weezer stood up to block Mercado, it was actually, that's the, they want to put a little facility nearby that, and he stood up and said, no, and then he said, yes, and then he said...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. If I could have Ms. McAllister, you have Items 1, 22, 1 and 22, and general public comment. So give her two minutes, and then a general public comment.
Thank you. Item number one, that's where you'd have these leans, and I've done some investigation, talked to some people who had leans, and what you're doing is sending, hiring illegal aliens to go through these communities and these poor neighborhoods, looking outside the house. You're not going inside. Outside the house, nickpity, picking, finding little things, come back to the city, write up the lean, and then serve them with the lean. That's what you're doing. Now, what you're doing with the houses, the ones who do lose their homes, you're selling those homes to illegal aliens. That's why we don't see illegal aliens living on the street. They're not in the shelters. The shelters are filled with black people. I have been to them. I go over there, I, the things I tell you, I've checked it out. I'm not telling you what anybody told me. The shelters are filled with black people. The Hispanics, Latinos, Asians, and Filipinos are getting these foreclosed homes. Now, who's profiting? You politicians. You get a kickback. Yes, you're getting kickbacks. We need the feds to come up in here. That's what we need. You go to any tent, all of these enclosures, you see no Hispanics, Latinos, Asians, or Filipinos. You see black people and white people. Whites are being misused, too. So we're going to get, we're going, we're going to take care of this. Item number 22, you want some money, you want $10,000 to talk about going around talking about racism. You got a lot of nerve. Go to Skid Row. You'll see some racism down there. 20,000 black people. Any black person, I don't care if you're a teacher, professor, whoever you are, if you go to these social service agencies and say, well, you know, you're homeless or something, they send black people to Skid Row. They refer them to the services of Skid Row. That's why you have 20,000. Illegal alien going to those social services agencies, they get apartments, they get money, they get welfare. I know what I'm talking about. We need the feds to come in here. This is a federal government issue. This city is so corrupt, you wouldn't believe it, and you have all these pony shows coming in here, dogs and everything, because you don't want people to know what's going on. But I tell people, listen to these audio tapes and videos...
Okay, let's give her her general public comment minute. Go ahead.
My general public comment is about Huzar, or Weezer. He's Skid Row. He's the one in Skid Row. He's got 100 million. I've got all the documents. He's got three projects, three housing projects he should be building on Skid Row, and I've added it up, 100 million. He hasn't built a thing. None of you have built anything for people to live in. Even though Farrell, he just started building, but at least he's building. None of you have done nothing. And Harris Dawson and Weezer are the two that are architects of HHH. They've done nothing. They haven't built anything, and I went to an HHH meeting last week, and guess what they're saying? Here is the new listing for 2018 and 19. I told them, I said, you haven't done anything in 2017 and 18. I want the taxpayers to know. This is a scam. HHH is a scam. They are pocketing, I don't know what they're doing with that money, but they haven't built a darn thing. And he asked for $350,000, Huzar, for beautification of Skid Row. You must be insane.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's bring up Mr. Spindler. Mr. Spindler, you have Item 1, 20, 21, and 22, and general public comment. Yes, sir.
Good. All right, so let's see. We'll start number one with the leans. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, okay. So, we're going to go to 1D, and this is going to be one in David Rue's district, so we have a David Rue update. Woo-hoo, Rue Rue, woo-hoo, rape rape, Rue Rue, rape rape, Rue rape.
On the subject, on the subject, Mrs. Spindler.
Oh, you'll see.
No, on the subject.
You'll see how I'm on the subject.
No, Mr. Spindler.
863 South Mullen Avenue. David Rue is raping his constituent for $2,569.32. Why is David Rue attempting to rape his constituent for this excessively horrible lean? And then we get to the other co-conspirator cover-up artist. It's in CD6. Nuri. Nuri. Excessive leans, excessive leans. We've talked about this with Nuri. We've talked about it with her husband. We've talked about it with her staff. She was going to stop doing this. Nuri, you're breaking the deal with the community. Please forgive this lean. Now, we get 21. Oh, we have the fake cause of the fire, and that's going to be in CD5. So please go ahead.
Yes. So, this is on the criminal asshole, Paul, the goat Coretts. Oh, no, I'm sorry. He's the, he's the pig. Oh, okay. I'm a goat. I can't make that sound. So, now we're falsely accusing the 405 freeway fire and some fictitious campers. Well, no, no, I have a better theory. Maybe the fire department started the fire to get the insurance money, right? No, 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 that's never happened in a major city. No, 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 no. So I guess it's just a bunch of homeless people that burnt half the Skirball Center freeway down, right? Of course. Is the insurance company going to pay? The city doesn't have insurance, but the rich Jews in the area have fire insurance, and they're going to sue the city for indemnification for your severe negligence under the vehicle, no, the government code. I'm sorry.
You're doing very good.
Thank you. So now, 22, M, Race, L.A. It sounds like a racist policy. No, on the racist number 22.
Okay, now, general public comment for one minute, Mr. Clerk, if you do that. Go ahead, sir.
September the 10th, 2002. The people of the state of California versus David Yunsock Rue, date of birth 7/23/1975. On about August 14, 2002, in the county of Los Angeles, the crime of attempted rape of an unconscious person in violation of penal code section 664, 261A4, a felony, was committed by David Yunsock Rue, who did unlawfully attempt to have and accomplish an act of sexual intercourse with a person, to wit, Jane Doe. Who's Jane Doe? Did Jane Doe get a settlement? The DA that handled the case conveniently lost the file, and then, you know what happened? She became a Superior Court judge. So I'm going to submit this, two pages for the record. If you want to see the rest of it, keep pissing me off.
Thank you. Okay, is Zuma Dogg here? Items 1, 20, 21, I think, and 22.
Good morning, Zuma Dogg. ZumaDogg.com, Z-U-M-A-D-O-G-G.com. The original Great Awakening in L.A. since 2006. First of all, item 22, relative to allocation. Relative to allocation. When Herb Weston says relative to allocation to Embrace L.A., it's called slush fund. So can I have a clarification as to what it's relative to, because it doesn't say here? Now, let's talk about, there's been, there's been an emergency declared in Los Angeles. There's an emergency. There's a fire that happened months ago that's already been put out, that the city knew about, and now it's an emergency for more money to be pilfered and absorbed up by everybody. Now, what I'm saying is, there was a, there was a fire off the 405. Now, it was homeless encampment, of which the city knew about. They did nothing. They allowed it to continue. There was an accident, there was a homeless fire, the cooking barbecue grill, it started a fire. The fire's put out. What's the emergency? Okay, so I say vote no on this, because the LA Times said that the city council knew about it, the LAPD knew about it, they didn't do anything about it, and then there was a fire, and it's been put out. Why is there an emergency? Eric Garcetti might be misinformed, because he's never here in the city. Can I have council request that Eric Garcetti come back from Iowa, from all over the country running for president, and address this important situation? Okay, I know he's, he's out there, I don't know what he's doing. He's running for president of the United States. So I'd like to, if Eric is watching somewhere from outside of L.A., since he's never in L.A., Eric, it's not an emergency, bro. Worry about the human trafficking pedophile ring that's running rampant through L.A. Now, that's an emergency. So just for contrast, a fire's been put out, that's an emergency. Meanwhile, it's all over the nation that L.A. seems to be a human trafficking pedophile ring, right here in Adam Schiff's district. Okay, so I think Eric might be running and hiding so that he doesn't have his pedo ass dragged into federal court.
Get back on topic, Mr. Dogg.
Thank you, I did drift. I did drift. It's just something I'm so concerned about, it's saturating my mind, this whole human trafficking pedo-gate situation involving Adam Schiff killing...
And let's come on back. In fact, you know, let's give him his minute for general public comment, where then you can just roll his one minute. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. It's good to be here, and everybody's asking me, gee, Zuma Dogg, why'd you come here today? I came here today because we got a council member named Jose Weezer, and he thinks he's the federal judge of this city, who's trying to shut down public comment speakers that are speaking against him. It's political retaliation. So I came here to city council to remind everybody, Zuma Dogg, kick your fucking ass in federal court over the issue to say I kicked your fucking ass, you bunch of pussy-ass losers. So listen, you got all the money in the world, you got George Soros backing you, you got the mainstream media covering up your rape allegations of people that, while they're subconscious, about the alcoholism, about the human trafficking. You got all the money and the power and all the voice of the media, and then you got some people that come here to try to speak up, and you got a bunch of corrupt pussy assholes that won't even fucking endure that? Zuma Dogg's back, baby! The public will be heard, you stupid bitch-ass motherfucking losers!
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, it's my understanding, we receive cards, let's keep it quiet. Mr. Dogg, let's keep it down. Mr. Gus signed up for 20, 21, and 22. You've already done your general public comment, so please stay on the topic.
Right. The floor is yours. How do you follow the truth like that? Let's talk about the truth. You've declared wildfires. Those aren't wildfires, those were crimes. I wrote in City Watch L.A. last year, and the L.A., the L.A. Weekly picked up my story. These aren't wildfires, these are crimes committed by L.A. Fire Department inspectors who fail and falsify their fire inspections, their fire abatement people. They have filed false, false reports. This wasn't a wildfire, this is a crime by fire inspectors on these two issues, and this isn't the only lie. Let me make an analogy, let me make an analogy to some other lies you've told here today. I'm going to make an analogy, let me make it in my own way. You had Blue Jean Day today, and I'm going to show the lie.
Now, Mr. Gus, you're going to get back on topic.
I am on topic, Mr. Weston.
Mr. Gus, just get back on top. We're not going to let you, we're not, no, you're not going to do what you want to do. You're going to stay on topic, okay?
The city council is lying about 20 and 21, the same way they lied about Blue Jean Day today. You are lying that these are wildfires, and in fact, these are crimes by L.A. Fire Department Fire Abatement Inspectors. It is the same lie, the same exact lie, where you have Blue Jean Day, and 20% of your colleagues have been accused of rape and sexual harassment. Why don't you allow clarity on the crimes of the fire inspectors that resulted in these quote-unquote wildfires? I am calling on you to have the same clarity on 20% of your colleagues being accused of rape and sexual harassment, to open those, those legal settlements and how much it costs the taxpayers. Because the wild... And it seems we veered it off. Okay, well, thank you for letting me make the point, though, that you were lying about 20 and 21, the same way you lied about Blue Jean Day. Regarding item number 22, Embrace L.A., the LA Times had a great story about it, so if you're talking about funds, though, since one of the dinners was at Mr. Weston's house, how can Mr. Weston vote on reimbursing himself? If any of those Embrace L.A. funds are going to Mr. Weston to reimburse him for the well-publicized Embrace L.A. dinner at his house, Mr. Weston has to recuse himself from the vote on number item 22 and leave the room until the vote is taken. We know the money's going into his pocket, he must recuse himself, though, and leave the room during the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on items 20, 21, and 22. On those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right. Ms. Richardson, are you still here? All right. Ms. Richardson, are you still here? Yes, Ms. Richardson.
This is a request to have the children nearest the housing project come to visit city council at your convenience for one half hour, just one busload at a time. It's at your convenience. One to five, not all of, just one busload at a time. And they don't have to stay here more than one half hour. So, they'll be more alert and know that the laws are made in city councils so that they can be more aware of what's going on around them, and so that they'll have something to write about in school. That is just for one half hour, between one and five schools, elementary, middle school, or high school, whatever you think will benefit the most from it. And so, they can listen to any portion of city council that would benefit them. That's just one, for one half hour. Any school nearest a project to come down here and see how the laws are made, and the laws are made here. That'll help them to be more alert.
Thank you. Anyone else sign up for public comment? That hasn't been called. No, you, you guys are all finished. It has not been called. Is there a Bogner, Bogram? Okay, there is no one else that signed up that... Or do we have Mr. Bogram, Bogram? Is that you, sir? Then come on down. Yes, sir. The mic is yours.
I have a letter received from the city. So, a lien. It is a lien for a ticket to lajama in my casa. For a ticket that I received at home. Now, I received a lien of 2,530-something. The first time that I received the lien, it was 336 dollars. It was 336 dollars. I paid it online. Now, I received this lien. I sent a letter to have this assessment removed. But nothing happened. That's why I'm, that's why I'm here, to see what we can do.
If you could pass on to him that this item has been continued for 30 days. So, he has until May 25th. He can communicate with the council office and the department staff to see if arrangements can be made. But he had no action will be taken today. That will be continued until May 25th. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Let's vote on the remaining of item number one.
And, Mr. President, if I may, there's been a number of recommendations from the department and related council districts. So, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that items 1A, B, D, G, and I be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid in full. That the lien amount for item 1C be reduced to $1,495.26 to reflect partial payment. That the lien amount for item 1J be reduced to $2,322.30 to reflect partial payment, and subsequently then continued to May 25, 2018. And that item 1N be received and filed in as much as the subject property was determined to be an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, and thus exempt from lien processing. That item 1M, M as in Mary, that we just heard from, be continued to May 25, 2018.
Okay, thank you. Let's, so ordered. Let's vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll.
And pardon me, sir. So, that one done without objection, and then the remaining items would be items 1E, F, H, K, and L. Again, E, F, H, K, and L.
Okay, that's what we're voting on. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate.
Twelve eyes.
And what is before this council now?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted. They're referred. Announcements, members' announcements. We can all rise for adjourned motions? All rise. Mr. Price, all rise. I'm looking to my left side. Mr. Weezer's side, I see none. I'm looking to my, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with a heavy heart that I ask that we adjourn in memory of Leslie Gonda. Leslie was a Jewish Hungarian child of the Depression, who was raised in the remote farming village of Mesotyr, where members of Jewish families weren't expected to amount to much. At 18, though, he became one of a select number of Jewish people in Hungary to pursue higher education on scholarship. However, his studies were soon interrupted when Nazis arrested him in Budapest and sent him to a labor camp where he spent two years planning an escape with two other captives. Using the typewriters in the military office, Leslie Schreun created false papers representing the three men as members of the Hungarian army. And in October 1944, they dressed in stolen uniforms and walked out the front gates with fabricated orders to report to Budapest. His name, Goldschmid, was a mark of Judaism brighter than any yellow star, so he chose to replace that with Gonda, borrowing it from a Christian family he knew in his village. While Leslie escaped the grips of the Nazis under this pseudonym he would carry for the rest of his life, his father and his dear sisters Lucy and Magda perished in the Holocaust. When the war ended, he met his future wife Susan in Budapest on the day she returned from Auschwitz. It was a matter of luck that she knocked on the door of distant friends who she remembered from childhood, and fortunately, they were home, and Leslie Gonda was sitting in their living room, and they met, fell in love, and fled to Switzerland to marry. And in 1947, they moved to Los Angeles to start a life and family. Eventually, Leslie Gonda co-founded a company in Los Angeles that transformed the global commercial airline industry as we know it. And many years later, after Susan passed away in 2009, Leslie Gonda often expressed his wish to be with her and to be spared the pain of facing a day in which they were not together. Yet, for his family and those he loved, he continued to push on and see their lives and stories unfold. And he proudly worked and arrived at the office at 7:00 AM every day until he was almost 99. Leslie and Susan leave behind a legacy, not just in their family, but also in their constant philanthropic pursuits of caring for those in need across the United States, Israel, and the world. And their charitable giving was ubiquitous. Even when I attended the Holocaust Memorial in Pan Pacific Park, I noticed that their name was on the side of one of the memorials, which they obviously funded. They called all of their giving investments in humanity. And my friend Tanya Bradkin, who was also a member of my council staff for a few years, helped them create and then ran the Gonda Family Foundation to advance all their charitable activities. Leslie Gonda said, "We believe in giving back for our own good fortune in this country. We are grateful for the opportunity to share the American dream with others around the world." He is lovingly remembered by his beloved son Lou and his wife Kelly, his daughter Lucy, his daughter Lorena and her husband Stephen, his niece Judy Rodan, and her children Ronnie, Liz, and Louis, and many, many grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and large extended family of people who loved him. When reflecting on life, Leslie often quoted one of his famous and favorite Latin proverbs, "Sicutur ad astra." Like this, we reach the stars. And may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Are there any more to my left? I don't see any to my left, to my right. Members, this meeting is adjourned.
At Home Depot, within the distribution center, we have about 275 orange-blooded associates. We bleed orange. Orange is our color for the Home Depot. We are actually the number-one do-it-yourself or DIY importer, and we are the number-three importer in the U.S. How we, the stocking distribution center, fits within the supply chain is our merchandise primarily comes from overseas. It hits the port of LA. We go ahead and inbound that merchandise. For the most part, it goes into inventory, being that we are seasonal. We then process that product. We pick it, and then we load it up into the trailer destined for that store. So, we're essentially kind of the hub in between our vendor as well as our stores. The Ontario, Miraloma, Fontana, Rialto area gives us close proximity to the port in terms of getting our freight on time. And then it also, from a density standpoint, puts us in a great position to service our market in California, and then the surrounding states, Nevada, Arizona, Utah, New Mexico, and so forth. Spring is actually the heavy season for us. Coming out of winter, there are a lot of do-it-yourself projects, spring cleaning, people getting ready for the summer, barbecue grills, patio covers, air conditioners, fans getting ready for the summer heat. We have just under 3 million square feet in our campus. However, we still walk. It's important, because we want that intimate interaction with our associates versus driving around on a golf cart or a bicycle. My first priority is to make sure that we've got the right team in place to service our 257 stores. Definitely like to spend time with my family. Once football comes around, it is a football household, now on Monday, Thursday, Saturday, and Sunday nights. I enjoy mentoring. I enjoy teaching. I enjoy seeing people achieve their goals. At the Home Depot, while it's a warehouse, I actually get to do that on a daily basis. At the end of the...